The meaning of the kind of a charter meeting. To.
Okay, Kevin Cox.
Here.
Sal Murillo.
Present.
Yumiko Motley. Andrea Honeycutt.
Here.
And Kurt Geis.
Here.
Thank you.
For our motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Want present? Motion carried.
Just so you know, I'm having a hard time hearing the chairs microphone.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Awesome, thank you. And now we will look to a presentation from the Orange County Supervisor of Elections Office with regard to the items previously recommended for discussion at the prior meeting.
So hello, my name is Dan Helm. I'm Director of Special Projects with the Orange County Supervising Elections Office. In front of you, you have a handout. It's a fairly basic handout. And I thought this meeting would be for a fairly informal discussion of questions that you have, things that I can help answer. I'm happy to talk. You have been provided previously about out-large district versus single-member districts. I know you have concerns about voting districts and what the sort of requirements or the understanding of the Supervising Elections Office is. I'll tell you, generally, we can accommodate anything that you do in your charter, right? You have good guidance from your attorneys on the charters that you'll implement. The Supervising Elections Office role is really to facilitate your elections, right? So whatever you decide in terms of elections and how you want to run, as long as they're with regards to state law, we can implement them. And we have a wide variety of the way our municipalities in Orange County do that. That being said, I'm certainly happy to give you advice. You know, certainly when we look at different municipalities on this second page, we split up districts, particularly with the city of Orlando, but this is their design. They decide to split up districts around, you know, 5,000 to 6,000 voting, active voters. Now, that's different from population, but it is that's sort of the split that we see typically, but they can always make distinctions. But you have a town like Apopka where it has 15,000, 20,000. And really, it determines the space and the location for the polling place. One thing I did this afternoon, we're planning to do an SD-15 and House District 4D race in June 24th. One of the polling places will be this 132 polling place, the Presbyterian Church, Oakland Presbyterian Church, where you guys vote for the town of Oakland as well. That's a fairly big facility. And given your turnout historically, I think it can accommodate up to a reasonable amount of voters, you know. The question is, when you split precincts and you decide that you're going to have a new polling location, there's an added cost to your election, right? So there's a substantial cost added for tabulators, the poll workers, the ballot styles, those types of things. And so many municipalities choose to elect to have as few polling locations as they can, as long as they can accommodate the number of voters. And so finding that determination is a fairly big facility. And given your historic turnout, I think it can accommodate the number of voters that you anticipate up to 10,000. But I'd be happy to discuss sort of what your concerns are about voting districts. Or, I mean, if you split up voting districts, not a problem for us. If you have a single-member districts, you know, that just means different ballot styles depending on. But in terms of whether, whatever you guys ultimately decide, the Supervising Elections is here to facilitate your election, you are the boss. You tell us the election that you want. We will help run it, but ultimately, the town is in control of that. And I'm happy to answer any just general questions about this.
Thank you for your presentation. I think from my review of the information that was provided, my inquiry would be the cost associated with a potential districting aspect. Not your advice about whether we should district, but what does that look like from a cost standpoint for the town? And what does it look like for additional resources that would be necessary if that were something that would be chosen?
Yeah, so I think the two-part question with the cost of choosing a redistricting plan, we certainly could give general advice, but I think that you would have to have your own sort of committee and mappers to draw your map yourself. We certainly could help with that process in some aspects. The second part of the question is the sort of generic cost of running the election. And so for the election board, the number of poll workers at the site, it's typically around 1,000 to 1,200, depending on how many actual poll worker staff on Election Day. This is not early voting. This is one day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Then the tabulator, the machine, you need $300 for the tabulator, $250 for the express vote, the ADA accessible machine, as well as then the cost of printing those materials, the machine costs of maintenance of those machines. It's another about $1,000. Just generic costs for each polling location is starting at 2,000. And there's added costs of ballot styles, printing and sample ballots, and those types of things for each sort of location. Then there's also a fee that we pay the location about $300 to $500, depending on location. So ballpark, $2,500 to $3,000 for a polling site is sort of an added cost. Then there's also printing costs and ballot styles that go through that. So it can, it can get added quickly. I think your last election, I saw on the data, it was about $8,000 all-in, but that's including the vote-by-mail, which is a different added cost of a machine, but and there's costs associated to multi-page ballots and, you know, that depending on how much pages you're printing, it's more, right? But just ballpark for adding a polling site is, you know, $2,500 to $3,000 for each new polling location. Is that, I was roundabout, did I help answer?
Quite fast-paced, but understandably, as it relates to costs, as it relates to the actual districting of Oakland. Who would be the responsible party for creating those districts? And how would the demographics and the tabulation of the population be calculated to create those districts?
Yeah, so I think that you have control over that. Now, if you wanted to request that we do that, I could come back to you and tell you sort of what that looks like. But I think that in terms of I would let you rely on your advice of council to make sure you're compliant with the requirements under districting law, compactness and otherwise, but that is something that you guys have full control of picking who you want to. Sometimes municipalities choose independent committees or even individual members that then have advice of council as they're going through the process. Right now, the county is going through this process with a county commission district. We're adding two new county commission districts. And they, the Board of County Commissioners appointed a committee that is going through the work with advice of staff and council to draw out those maps and those districts. And so they're actually using publicly available software. And so you can, you could minimize the cost if you're clever about it. But I think that having a legal oversight from your town town attorney would be helpful in that process to make sure you're compliant with the law and the requirements of redistrict.
Do you mind if I ask a question real quick?
Go ahead.
Do that in. Thank you so much. You mentioned, you mentioned that software. I've not had a chance to play with it yet on the county redistricting effort. How hard is that to set up to throw at a given GIS map and so on? I just asked because part of the discussion that's happened among this committee is whereas Orange County, we have well over 1.4 million in population right now. Oakland, of course, is not there. And so the question becomes, when you start dividing up Oakland X many ways, four different ways or what have you, how many different ways that can reasonably end up and what you yield in differences between number of individuals versus number of voters in different geographic areas and so on. Just as one constraint to keep in mind, regardless of any other requirements whatsoever, when you divide up into districts, you're going to, one would need to try to make those districts as reasonably equal as possible in population, not voters, but actual human beings residing in each of those districts. So that's, that's going to be a general guiding requirement among others.
Yeah, so as you mentioned, there are multiple guiding requirements. Most important is the population, right? And the question is how many different ways you could draw this map and whether the software can accommodate that. I mean, it's publicly available software. It's Dave's redistricting is what the county committee is using to draw the maps. Now, they have paid consultants, though, to come in and help to some, I'm not certain of the sum, but the consultants are directing this. Often consultants will have their own software that they're guiding to make sure that they're meeting the legal requirements. The way maps are generally drawn is with using census-designated blocks. And those blocks already have a built-in population. The problem about, as you consider this, is you are in the middle of a census. So if you really wanted to undertake this, you're using data that would be sort of five years out of date and might not reflect the population. Now, there's other ways that you can use other data, but the problem is it doesn't have the demographics data you need to also maintain. And so it becomes somewhat of a logistical problem that, you know, the current, for example, the current redistricting that's happening is using the census data from 2020. So it is somewhat out of date in comparison. But from a legal standpoint, it's what they can defend if they were to sue over these maps. Variation, they're using the best data available that has as a basic framework. And so, you know, that's, that's a question for your esteemed legal counsel. But in terms of the workability of the maps, I'm surprised at the many different ways you could actually draw. It might seem, you know, how many, how you could cut this, you know, pizza in so many different ways, but you might be surprised that many different people can view it different lens and cut it many different ways. But that being said, you know, it is a smaller type of map. I think that if you were to consider doing this, it wouldn't be an untold some amount of work and many disagreements on the right way to draw it, you know, whether you're drawing north-south for two or four, you're drawing four corners. But, you know, people can be creative and I don't undermine undermine anybody's creativity in terms of the way they can draw a map.
I would be very surprised if you knew this off the top. This is not something he should know off the top of his head. So you know. Do you happen to know how many census tracts we have here in Oakland?
I don't. I could, I could get it fairly quickly, but I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I hadn't played around with it either. What he indicated to you, and just to share with you all, in addition to my charter work that I've discussed with you all before, I was among many other places, I was General Counsel for the Pinellas County Redistricting Board when they did their redistricting back in 2020. And as been indicated to you, it's exactly correct. The appropriate way to do it is to divide it up along census tracts because that is the most granular piece of data that you have appropriate information to make sure you're complying with Civil Rights Act concerns, among other things, in a legally defensible way. As he indicated as well, along the lines of having a consultant, while of course it is a large county, Pinellas, larger county here in Orange County, it is generally because of the risk of litigation, it is usually very advisable that in addition to having legal counsel, that you have a consultant experienced in doing it in a lot of jurisdictions to be able to assist you through that process to make sure that it's something that would be defensible both from a pure legal standpoint and expert witness testifying standpoint, if we ever get into litigation. So those are pieces when you're transitioning to single-member districts in that respect. Very common thing we would recommend.
Okay, so in response to the information provided in your legal opinion, we are obviously tasked with this charter review and we want to make sure that we're exploring all options available. And so I would want to know what the census tracts are, if that information is available. While it is my personal opinion that it may be premature for us to move in any direction, I don't in any capacity want to take that opinion and not explore the data that's available to us to provide to the public as a consideration for our ultimate decision-making process. And so I don't know if that's something I would lean to our town manager or would I lean to Supervisor of Elections?
Be happy to, yeah.
For providing us with the census tracts and the available information for the 2020 census. Just acknowledging that it's five years dated and we're looking forward towards like a 10-year like growth process. But just having an opportunity to analyze that data to make a more informed decision about where we decide on the districting matter.
Sure, I'd be happy to provide sort of a breakdown of Oakland by census tract. So you can see in census tract data tracks a lot of the demographics that you then use to build out to make sure you're compliant for, you know, whether you're drawing majority-minority districts or otherwise. So that equal population, compactness, continuity, all those, all those factors that legal counsel will guide you through. But then, yeah, I'd be happy to provide that data for the town of Oakland.
Chair, one other thing I would mention, kind of following along on that, as was indicated, we're in 2025 right now. Anything the CRC would be looking to do would be putting it on a ballot. And then if they were to implement that, you'd be looking at even further along in the decade. In looking at that data, it's doable. Orange County is doing it right now. But it militates even more in favor, I would suggest, if the town were to go in that direction, that you would definitely want to have a consultant. Because translating data directly from raw census data in the first or second year of a decade is a lot more straightforward than trying to integrate in five years of Bieber projections from the University of Florida and so on, which would be the appropriate thing. And one of the things the consultant for Orange County, I presume, is going to be doing to work some of that data. And I apologize, Bieber is, is the University of Florida Bureau of Economic something or other, I can't remember. Yeah, it's, it's a bureau at the University of Florida that for the state of Florida is responsible for coming up for coming up with population projections that the state and local governments can rely on decade to decade.
My understanding is that we would be, we would, our purpose would be basically what we would do would be to recommend a, I mean, a district review committee that actually does the work that y'all are talking. Right? As far as the consultant, the districting map.
So.
And that's not something that we would be involved in. And so honestly, I think where you were heading a minute ago was that it's not going to be far off from the next census or the map would actually be done.
The next census won't be out until, assuming no delays, 2031.
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, when you started adding the time up, okay, when's our charter? And then a year-long committee to do this. I mean, it could be something for the future even. I think the my other word question was how we have one large department. And how does that have that rated up?
Yeah, so that, that map will then skew, it's really drawn based on population, right? You're allowed a deviation up to about 10% typically from each district to one another. So if one has $5,000 people, you know, you want the other ones to have 5,000, but you can have a deviation of, you know, then 500. If that's, that's sort of the size. And so that, that being said, you know, if you have a large population focused in one place, the map is going to skew to that direction to draw that district. And so you'll have to just accommodate otherwise. The population, you are allowed deviation though, right? So typically legally defensively, leave it to the lawyers, although I am a lawyer. What is, what is defensible, but 10% is sort of the threshold when you're doing this. I think you're wise to have a committee or other experts come in and delegate this work, but you, there's nothing prohibiting you as commissioners from ultimately, you will be then approving the map that comes through and you could undertake the work yourself. But there's certainly advice to having it both ways. And again, the Supervising Elections Office would be happy to help have staff or otherwise give some, some guidance to that process. But we would probably feel more comfortable if you had your own consultants and legal doing that.
And I think to your point, whole member, is that we would be maybe recommending a review of that process, but the results of our committee would be whatever those decisions are and leave it to the commission for further review moving forward. Does that make sense? Is that my understanding? So obviously, let's say that at the commence of this process, we decide that we don't want to move forward with the districting plan. However, it could be recommended for the next review, then we would leave it to the commission to commit the investigatory, you know, implementations to bring back those recommendations?
That is certainly a recommendation the CRC could make to the town commission, yes.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, this is the Charter Review Committee. That is.
Thank you. I mean, I think that the commissioner itself could also, you could recommend that they look at census data in 2031 and maybe have another review or discussion regarding this. I mean, I think they are in full control bringing it at that time, you know, if that's planned. Or again, we're happy to help facilitate the best we are able. I'm certainly happy to provide the census tracts, just so you have some idea of what it would look like if you were to start drawing, just to see the demographic.
And Chair, actually, what you brought up is, is actually a fair point that I don't think we've had the opportunity to bring up yet as kind of an additional tool, if you will, available to most any Charter Review Committee in whatever form, is if you have something that, that is of significant interest, but maybe just now isn't necessarily the right time, but you think at some point in the future, it ought to be reviewed. In a final report coming from the Charter Review Committee, it could include within it a recommendation that after the census, you know, after the 2031, 2030 census comes back, that the that the town commission revisit and study whether to implement something along those lines. So that, just keep that in mind that that's a, that's a tool available to the committee as a whole.
Thank you.
So, so I did have a question for the Supervisor of Elections representative. You mentioned that you have, you have the opportunity or would be going to offer an opinion on this. I'm interested in your opinion because you guys do this on a daily basis. You see other municipalities are similar size or even bigger. You know, what do you guys think about the fact that Oakland is considering districting and whether that's a good idea or not?
I mean, I'll stay neutral, right? I think that we can accommodate any type of election you guys want to handle, right? I think that there are many different ways a town can be run that, you know, at-large or single-member districts is really determinations to be made up by the voters of the town or the, when they're making their charter or the town when they're doing this process. It, from our standpoint, it really doesn't matter in terms of you guys are the boss when it comes to the election and you tell us we want to have single-member districts, great. We will facilitate your ballot to accommodate that and get the information to the voters so they can make the informed decision. We don't, we don't have a preference really. We do it all different ways in Orange County. And so we are happy to help facilitate your elections, but you are the ultimate decider on, you know, whether or not it's a good or bad idea. You know, we don't take a stance on, on that issue.
And just a matter of clarification to the member who presented the issue, I think that the Supervisor of Elections is here to provide us with a more logistical aspect of if we chose to go that way, what it would look like as far as, you know, polling and cost-effectiveness, but not in any regard giving us a legal opinion as it relates to our decision to go there here as a resource to provide what their office would support us in a transition to that, if that's what we decided. And what that would look like as far as polling locations and staffing and cost, but not directing us in a legal capacity.
And I'll just share.
Just to be clear, I didn't, I, yeah, I did not ask for a legal opinion. What I asked for was what other municipality, maybe I'll ask the question this way. Are there any other municipalities of our size that have districts within Orange County? Or are they all at large?
So in terms of so Belle Isle has two and they are at-large, though. Akoi has single-member districts. They are a little larger than you are. Significantly at this point, but given your goal of 10,000, right? So I'm, I'm using that framework, you know, 10,000 in relation to other municipalities. Maitland has two districts. They're closer in size. They do have their so, you know, it is I can run through the list and decide, give you a breakdown of each within Orange County, if it'd be helpful, just in terms of raw comparison, but I provided to the committee today a number of precincts based on active voters, inactive voters and total voters, which has Oakland here, you know, right now, you guys are about 3,800 total voters with one precinct. And it really is a determination for us in terms of a logistical framework, how many precincts you want within those single-member. Because you could still have multiple single-member districts, but from our standpoint, that is only changing the ballot on a piece of paper. Then we provide different ballot styles. So voters, as they come in, it is a logistical puzzle, but one that we are apt to do. It's only when you want to have new polling locations at each of these single-member districts, then it becomes a sort of cost associated with doing that type of work. But just having different single-member districts in and of itself is not problematic. It just needs to be information to the voters so that they are aware about where they live, which district they're in. So they are getting the right ballot style when they come to the poll. It's something that we, we can handle. But again, we're here to accommodate and, but many different municipalities do it different ways. Akoi does it one way, you know, Winter Park does it a different way, you know, there's lots of good ways to do an election and we're here to help facilitate those the best we're able.
So just to flesh this out a little bit, because I think the one example you might find in Orange County is Belle Isle. We've talked about Belle Isle previously. Belle Isle's small city and they have, I just pulled up, oh, you got a, he's got a copy. Got a copy of the districts here. Seems to encompass different peninsulas around the lakes down there, basically. And if, if you recall or know when you've got these districts down in Belle Isle there for voting purposes, logistically, how does for voting purposes, logistically, how does that work at their two precincts? Do they have to know you got to show up at this precinct versus this precinct? And then do they have sub precincts within it or?
Good question, right? So as you can see in the map, there are seven different districts that Belle Isle has. They have one polling place. They have two precincts, but they both precincts vote at the same location. And so the people that show up will come to the check-in desk, they'll present their identification based on their address, we know what precinct they're in, we will hand them the right ballot to that precinct. So it's not a problem from us to facilitate that election. It's just for the voter, it's not very confusing at all. They're showing up to vote, they're presenting their identification, photo and signature or ID, we give them the right ballot based on where they live. But that in terms of the cost, it's the same for they have one polling location, but they have multiple precincts, they have multiple voting districts. I think that all of them are at large, though, right? So it they are able to vote for anybody depending on. But if you, even if they were a single member, again, like we could, based on their address, we could give them the right ballot style to the to the candidate of their choice.
I had an additional comment as well while we are on the topic of Belle Isle and and their voting districts. Belle Isle currently has two vacancies and they were unable to to fill those seats. Now, I don't want to say that it is because of the districting or any other reason, because frankly, I don't know, but I'm looking on their website and it is there is a a call for interested individuals to apply to become appointed. And they list the terms of those, you know, those appointees as being from April 1st, 2025 to April 2028. And so given that they listed the term of April 1st, it appears that they are having trouble filling those vacancies.
It just, we helped facilitate that election this past March. They did have just open seats, no one decides to run. And so from a practical standpoint, you know, they had trouble sort of recruiting candidates for their body. And I don't, every town and municipality is different, but that certainly is a consideration to make sure that you are not limiting it so that you have no one that can fulfill the desire to be in that. And so sometimes I think Belle Isle requires that residency that they live in the actual district. And so they have several different districts. And so having a resident from each district volunteer to run is sometimes difficult, particularly given the law changed with Form 6 and Form 1. And so many municipalities this past cycle have seen pushback or lack of interest of people deciding to do this volunteer position when they are so exposed or otherwise. So I I it's not, you know, me advising one way or another. I'm just, you know, giving that those are practical considerations for Belle Isle and other municipalities when they're making these decisions.
So I do we have more questions about districting or?
Andrea, did you have anything?
I think my overarching question with this, given the information that was presented today, is maybe more of a philosophical question of what is the benefit of districting for a town of our size?
Is this for me?
Yes.
So I won't give sort of my own personal opinion on the benefits of single member or at large. I think that in terms of the role of Supervise Elections, it makes no difference to us whether it's a single member district or at large. You know, there are philosophical questions about, you know, whether or not a voter is more connected to a single member district or whether they feel closer to their neighbors and when they're voting in a single member district. But those are questions that you guys can explore and look at aid in otherwise. There's, you know, that's a poly-sci thesis oriented question. But in terms of, you know, from the Supervise Elections, you know, there there's not a guidance that we would give on what is better or worse. You know, there are many different ways to run municipality and I think that you guys will come to a well-educated decision.
I want to respect your time, but yet I think some of the data on this excels pretty interesting.
Yeah.
I think Elise provided this from the municipality cities, League of Cities, the.
Oh, yeah, that's from Florida League of Cities.
Well, just I'm just giving it a quick glance. I mean, these are municipalities that have a population that are similar to ours. Maybe there's what, 20 or 25 of them? And there there's a wide variety, it looks like, of different forms of government.
Yes.
I know we were going to talk some about money also, about mayors and commissioners getting data is on there. The elected body breakout, isn't that what?
Yes, so what I asked FLC for was to poll between eight to 10, well, they polled about seven, 7 to 10,000 population estimates and to tell us what was if they had term limits, the elected body breakout and the the commission salary, because we had asked those three questions. That's what's in front of you.
Do you all have that information also?
Yeah, I reviewed it, yes.
It's interesting that there is a big mix of what municipalities do.
Yeah, so there's no right answer.
And I think that's my follow-up is obviously the data was provided to us and thank you, Elise, for making that happen. It's digesting that data amongst us individually and kind of, you know, with the lack of public comment here today, we're being tasked with digesting that data, deciding what we feel about it, and then leaning towards our legal counsel to give us some instruction as to, you know, if we're leaning towards one one way or another, what that looks like for us in the future. I will say as a pro a point of personal commentary, even with the prediction, projection that we may foresee our population being in 10 years, we have to lean back to what Stephanie just stated, you know, we've had vacancies and we don't have people to even apply to fill them. And then we're leaning towards alternative measures. And when we talk about districting in a town of our size, we have to lend way to the resources that we're going to need to do that and the residents and constituents that are going to be supportive of that drive. And so I I think from a personal point of like perception, that's a big deal. We've experienced it in the last year or two and we potentially could experience it again. And so while it may be a consideration, I'm leaning towards making that a recommendation to the commission at some point in the future or consideration to bring back maybe to the next committee. But obviously, we have the ability and the wherewithal to vet the data that is available to us right now. And I mean, really take some time to vet that data and talk about why they're similar to us and why not and what we see and foresee for community moving.
So I did have a question about logistics. So you kind of mentioned the cost of a polling location starts at two. I think la- our last one, according to the records, was about eight, 8,000. And so one of the questions we had, maybe you could offer some information, what if we were to, on the heels of voter turnout, what if we were to kind of align Oakland's voting with kind of a general election or some some other one in hopes of getting better turnout for elections or or participation? And so interested in logistically, what would that mean? And then, yeah, let's start there.
Great question. So like looking at like November general election. So we are hesitant to advise municipalities to choose that in part because of the multi-page ballot. And so if you have a number of charter amendments on it and a number of candidates, suddenly a voter going to the polls in November is not seeing a two-page ballot with statewide amendments, Orange County amendments. They're also seeing city amendments, right? And so suddenly you can have a six-page, seven-page ballot, which causes voter confusion, how many pieces of paper they're putting into the machine, pieces of paper get lost, as well as then the costs associated with running that election. I will say, just as a caveat, the Florida Legislature currently has a bill that's moving through the process of moving all municipal elections to the general election in November. So this might be forced us onto us from a state level anyway. So I I would track that bill. It certainly, I would say, it it does increase turnout. You're going to see a higher turnout for people that are showing up in general election, whether it's a presidential year or governor's juritorial year. That is just typically how people turn out. Sadly, they don't always show up for these important municipal elections. And so you're going to see, in terms of the logistics, the logistic problem is really about a multi-page ballot in terms of the costs associated with printing that, mailing it out, the costs associated with sample ballots, mailing it out. So there's additional costs when you do that process. And from our logistical standpoint of those, who as a practical matter, we are advising against municipalities choosing that because of the added costs and the voter confusion that would take place on Election Day. You know, nobody, and voter fatigue, right? You know, slogging through, you're going to see a lot of undervotes, meaning that people don't get to the municipal elections, they just get tired on Election Day of, you know, another page, another page. So, yeah, it's 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 a fine balance of wanting to increase turnout, but also from a logistical standpoint, whether or not voters can get through a multi-page ballot, depending on, you know, whether or not there's amendments or not.
From our point of view, it's it's like, did you see the Acoee recent election?
Yes.
I mean, it was horrific.
Yes.
They had 1,351 voters out of 29,000 in Acoee. So for 4.5% rate of voting and 56% of those voters were from one district because they had.
Yeah.
And so the other districts were even more.
Now, that that is, that's true of this past March municipal election, although you have other municipalities like Winter Park that has much more engaged vote-by-mail population. And so we've, what we, one thing that we found, and this is a good public service announcement, is everybody's voter vote-by-mail expired in December of this past year with the change of legislature. Everybody has to renew. And so some municipalities are more active about having their members do vote-by-mail because it is accessible. And we see, you know, 90% turnout from people that if you request a vote-by-mail ballot, 90% turnout for the March municipal elections. And so that's one way to increase turnout is to encourage your population to vote by mail, because when people get mailed ballot, they're more apt to put it in the mailbox and mail it back in. Now, there's an added cost typically for municipalities for vote-by-mail. Sometimes the cost is more expensive than actually going to vote in person or early voting. But in terms of increasing turnout, vote-by-mail is a great way to encourage.
I think I just want to piggyback on the obvious comparison with other locales that are close to us and just the public service. You know, Oakland is different. We are different. We have a unique community and it's smaller. And I want to make sure that we're not comparing ourselves so much to other locales around us that we're getting caught in the weeds of what they're doing versus the issues that we may hear. And so I understand it's good to compare demographics and, you know, turnout and different things, but as a community, I want to make sure that we're honing in on what our issues really are and how the changes could affect our demographic. I don't want to get so popularized in what other people are doing that we end up losing our town home field that we all recognize and agree with. And so I think we're here to obviously receive the data, analyze in consultation with legal, but just just kind of remain a little unique in the capacity of they're getting bigger than the riches maybe. And we want to be a little more concise and clear and considerate of our residents in our moving forward.
Yeah, I was saying, the PPP, I think you guys had the highest sort of turnout of 35%, I think, that what the data showed. And so and I would encourage municipalities to all along that that election cycle because it is a way to reduce the cost during a PPP. And so that's a good goal for municipalities to reduce the cost, but also have people come out and increase turnout. So, you know, that that's one thing that works. I think that's in your charter to have it when when it's available.
Have any additional commentary or inquiry for the representative from the Supervisor of Elections, from committee members or staff?
Kurt, do you have anything? I think we lost him. Andrea.
Madam Chair, I was just going down the list of.
No, you did not lose me. I just couldn't hit the mute button. I know, I'm I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kurt. I was just going down the list of items that we had here. Enough, we want to go through those. There were some financial implications, potential changes in recommendations in election timing. I don't know all we have to do. We still have questions about these or if they were covered in the discussion.
Actually, Madam Chair, to that point, this might actually be a good time to ask a question, may not have prepared for it. Sorry about that. But as you'll be doing your run-through of the remaining chapters of the Charter, a little bit, a little bit here, I'll be discussing a little bit, one of the general recommendations our office had to look at, and that had to do with the process of runoff elections. So in the Charter right now, it contemplates runoff elections and it contemplates runoff elections wildly quickly. Contemplates them, is it within two weeks?
I believe it was 21 days.
Yeah. And so I think that the point to that is that there are requirements under federal law for overseas voters that are serving or overseas citizens as well, a mailing of 45 days. You have to mail out vote-by-mail ballots 45 days. That might come in conflict with your current charter. I think that's a point well taken, that many municipalities do 60 days for runoff. But it, you know, you guys are in control of that, but giving enough time to be in compliance with sending out ballots is important.
And our, we very rarely have any sort of hard recommendation or anything like this in what we do, but in light of recent history, the last many decades in Oakland, runoff hasn't actually occurred. And so the thought was perhaps that might just be one bit of elaboration more than the town necessarily needs, waiting around for another 60 days for a runoff election to, you know, fill spots on the town commission. So at bare minimum, I think the feedback from the Supervisor's office would be if they were, you're going to retain runoff elections, you need to push them out substantially further.
I think in our prior meeting, we discussed a recommendation for filling of vacancies to be 90 days as opposed to 30 in the Charter. And so I think that it's possible that we could maybe reconsider a 90 to 120-day period in light of the information that was presented to us.
And so I think that it's possible that we could, um, maybe reconsider a 90 to 120 day period in light of the information that was presented to us. Um, but obviously I think our decision prior was 90 days as opposed to the third.
Well, specifically to not just vacancy, but runoff. So when there's, uh, is that?
Yeah. And, and what's in the charter right now, and I may be misremembering, but, uh, with respect to that 30 days, that's, that's currently in there, uh, that's 30 days for the town commission to make a decision to fill that vacancy. And then, um, so that doesn't involve the supervisor's office.
Okay.
And then, under the current provisions, if the town commission doesn't do it within 30 days, it actually doesn't go to the supervisor's office, it goes to the governor, which I would offer to you, probably would sit there a while regardless of who the governor is.
So I think that, um, we will acknowledge and appreciate the clarification given by the supervisor of elections office as our recommendation. And when we get to that point of agenda, we can address.
And I'm, I'm happy. I don't need to be anywhere. I took off this afternoon. So I'm happy to sit. And if you guys want to, don't feel like you have to ask all the questions now, uh, I'm also available to come back.
Um, hearing no additional inquiry or question for the representative from the supervisor of elections, we'd move forward to, um, agenda item number five, uh, relate to the proof of residency or qualification, um, specifically under the City of Orlando Charter, which was provided in the memorandum from legal counsel.
Stephanie, you want to handle it or you want me to? Very briefly?
You can take the floor, Wade.
All right. Very good. Um, and, and actually, uh, committee members, I, I didn't get a chance to mention at the beginning, but I must apologize. I'm going to have to run out of here. A little later in the meeting, um, I've got to get to a meeting on the complete other side of town. Y'all know how the turnpike and 408 are. So, um, but in the time we have, I'm going to do my best to hit a couple of things. You have before you a memo, uh, addressing, uh, provision that, that I had actually brought up previously in the City of Orlando Charter that related to precisely to the subject matter y'all were looking at, uh, and that is, uh, criteria set forth in the City of Orlando Charter concerning, uh, evidence or, or proof to be presented of residency for qualification to run for mayor or district commissioner in the City of Orlando. You see, uh, quote of that provision there and a little bit of discussion, um, as you'll see, the language there, uh, references, that satisfactory, uh, proof of meeting the residency requirements shall include submission of all of the following applicable items for one-year period prior to qualifying, homestead exempt, exemption documentation, residential property lease, utility bills which reflect usage of utilities at a level indicating actual residence and a Florida driver's license registration. So you have some, uh, just kind of, uh, framework around, uh, the two pieces of it, but that's kind of where it gets down into the weeds. As the memo indicates, and it's never our place to, to, uh, strongly criticize what any other charter says or anything like that. This is just, uh, offering this thought from, from experience around the state. Some of the detail that this provision in the City of Orlando, uh, charter gets into is probably a fair bit more than, than in my experience, my office would generally recommend. Not suggesting to you it's an, uh, off-limic topic by any stretch. And I'm not saying that this, uh, provision is, you know, inherently illegal or anything like this. But, um, what I think our office would recommend to you, if there is an appetite for the committee to, uh, look at that particular question of proof of residency, you know, under the residency standards under Florida and federal law, but evidence to be adduced or, or provided to do that, it may make more sense to put before the voter's, uh, charter amendment that says, uh, specifically that the town commission is authorized by ordinance to, uh, set forth evidence that, uh, can or must be adduced to, you know, demonstrate residency under that. Um, and just as an example, to that point, we put together some potential draft language that might go in that direction if the committee's so inclined. The primary reason, it kind of goes to a lot of things we've discussed before. When you get into very fact-dependent analyses, which I would suggest to you, uh, residency is one of the most interesting ones, reason why there's so much case law about it. It's a lot of case law to propagate about it because of individual life circumstances and it gets really interesting sometimes to prove that up in various ways. I would suggest to you that an ordinance would be a more useful tool to be able to address a lot of the different circumstances that may go into that. Anything you put into a charter is going to be there until you have a referendum to change it. And one of the most troublesome circumstances you run into in local government law is a situation where they have something in stone in a charter, there's nothing to be done about it. Everybody looking at a given situation on any side says, uh, that's not right. It's not fair. We didn't think of that. And then everybody's hands are tied. You know, obviously there'll be situations where people might think this or might think that. In some situations, the worst is where everybody's on the same page, but they say, my hands are tied, they can't do it, they can't go on. And then you're in, uh, more what have you. Again, not my place to, to necessarily, you know, strongly critique the City of Orlando's charter provision on this. I, I do know from just general recollection that, uh, how it's been applied has been the subject of a lot of push and pull over the years. I think by virtue of the, the complicated subject matter it's, uh, it's dealing with. So if the CRC has a, uh, ought to go in that direction, I think our, our recommendation for something that would be more of a, a charter appropriate, um, matter relating to that subject matter would be along the lines of what we provide. And I'm glad to answer any questions.
So my initial review of the qualifications for the City of Orlando Charter were, um, pretty in-depth. And I did revert that to, um, the current town of Oakland's application or submission for qualification. And what it does, it does, you know, require you to certify that you're a registered voter, you're a citizen, and you've lived continuously for one year. And upon signing that application, you attest that that information is true. And so for all intents and purposes, with the part, once that is submitted, you're attesting that these are your qualifications, absent someone contesting those qualifications. And I think in a situation where that will be contested, then it may be more available for an ordinance to challenge the actual documentation that's approved, if that's my understanding. But I don't want to get into the weeds of you're submitting a qualifications application with a copy of your homestead, your driver's license, your voter registration card. And, and that could just be me for the size of our locale, that I think that the attestation is sufficient absent a challenge to it.
So just to give you a little, little bit of context to, to scale it out from, from just municipal elections in one municipality, when you scale out to other elections that, um, actually supervisor elections office, uh, serves as the qualifying officer for a bunch of other officers, not, you know, not under, uh, what we have in Oakland, but for county officers, for example. So they, they'd be the ones taking in, uh, those applications. Basically from the county level on up, there is, uh, nothing at all other than a certification similar to what, uh, you just indicated, Chair, that's, uh, required in the, or an election code and the forms that are promulgated by the Division of Elections, where a candidate is certifying under oath that they have hold all the qualifications for the office they are running for. So there's a requirement that you have a blanket affidavit, if you will, blanket, uh, sworn statement that you are meeting those qualifications without attaching a bunch of paper behind it, but you have a sworn statement to that effect. That is, uh, what is both necessary and sufficient, you know, initially or running for county commission in all 67 counties to run for state rep, to run for state senator, run for Congress, um, and to run for, uh, any of the constitutional offices statewide. So, um, that's kind of your, uh, say your starting default position. As, as is implicit in this memo here, I think it is within the ambit of a municipality if they wanted to. Like I said, I don't, I don't think the, the City of Orlando provision is per se illegal or, you know, barred by, uh, the Florida Election Code or anything like this. But, um, so it, it is something a municipality, although all those other elections do not get into it, municipality could. Recommendation along these lines is, is really more to the effect. If you want to do anything more than what is required for all those other offices, that'd be something that, that you put a charter provision in expressly call it out, but that you give, uh, opportunity to be able to tailor it a little bit more to a specific situation.
It sounded like too, um, and, and I apologize if I misunderstood your, your comment or your question, that you were sort of getting at what, what would the difference be between if these requirements were adopted via ordinance versus via the charter? Um, and I will say as a general matter, one of the, um, the tools that municipalities can and, and often do use when something that has been adopted via ordinance is later challenged in litigation, the municipality can, can take a second look at what was put in that ordinance and potentially amend the ordinance to just moot the issue. In, in the context of a charter amendment, that isn't possible without a referendum. And, and so that's where kind of the, the hand tying comes in where, you know, even if everybody is in agreement that, hey, you know, this is a scenario that really wasn't contemplated and, and it is not allowed under the, a technical application of the language, um, your hands are tied. That's, I don't know if you were, if you were asking, um, for more elaboration on that, but.
I think the point that I was making was I was not inclined to revise the charter with respect to that, but I'm not first on what the ordinance, um, behind it may require in the event of a challenge.
Well, to, to adopt the ordinance, I suppose I'll start from the, the beginning. It would, that would be something that would be brought before the town commission. And it would have to go through a first reading and a second reading. So there would be two opportunities to discuss that and hear public comment as to the proposed ordinance. Um, and then a, a legal challenge to that ordinance usually is just somebody filing a complaint and, and, you know, moving forward with the litigation. But even in that, that circumstance, going back and amending that ordinance would take the first reading, then the second reading.
I guess maybe my next is I don't know what ordinance we currently have that speaks to it.
I, I don't believe we have anything on the books right now that specifies, um, anything other than, uh, effectively what you referenced there on, on the municipal form, which is effectively restating what is required by the Florida Election Code, certifying that they, uh, meet the qualifications for the office for which they're running.
Okay.
Uh, that, that's where that language that's on the Oakland form is derived, is from the Florida election.
That's very clear for me now as to where I would.
So I did have a question, just thinking about multiple things. So the form is the standard, universally accepted. If we want to add language to the charter, it could make reference to an ordinance, which then the committee would need to have first, second reading, determine what goes in there, if they want to get more granular or not. So if I understood all that correctly, my question is, at the time I submit my application, I say, yes, I live in Oakland and everything's great. And I get, I go through the process, I get elected. A year later, I decide that I'm going to take residence elsewhere, maybe part-time, maybe full-time, doesn't matter. I've submitted and attested to at the time I submitted my application that it was correct, but at a future state, I'm not. Is there anything in the charter and/or ordinance that would speak to that? Is that a valid concern?
There is a requirement, and I can track it down here. There is a requirement that, uh, that all the elected officials, uh, that the members of the town commission maintain at all times all the qualifications, uh, that were necessary for elect.
Yes, that is set forth in section 2.5 P1 of the charter. And, um, the title of that subsection is forfeiture by disqualification. And, uh, one of the, the factual circumstances that would result in forfeiture by disqualification is if a commissioner ceases to maintain his or her permanent residence in the town during his or her term.
And that would apply whether it was in the ordinance or in the charter?
Yes, this, this requirement, um, would, would remain, uh, in place regardless of any sort of proof that had to be submitted when a person is trying to qualify.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think that now that those things have been explained, are there any, um, questions or inquiries as it relates to revising the charter as it stands with regard to residency? Or would we move to some type of agreement that we're okay with that revision as it stands right now?
Since I'm sitting here, I'm, I'm the qualifying officer for the Orange County Supervisor election. So I, um, deal with questions like this all the time. One thing I'll say is that the qualifying officer under the Florida Election Code acts, um, in a ministerial duty. And so they are not, uh, your clerk is not going to be the one checking residency, no matter what the requirement is. Their job is to accept paper. Um, they, they can't verify the accuracy of that. It's really independent of that, a legal challenge that is brought on residency typically is what happens. Um, so that's just something I wanted to add.
And I think that's how I kind of understood it, absent a challenge that would be legally, you know, we've seen and heard that surrounding counties have those residency challenges recently. Our clerk is just going to certify and accept the attestation, absent a challenge, then we would accept that and move forward. And in line with Stephanie's, um, calling out the provision of maintaining the requirements for qualification or candidacy, that's an ongoing right that an individual would have as their personal obligation in a candidacy. So I personally don't believe that we should alter the state of residency in the charter as it exists right now.
I would agree with that. I don't, despite everything that you talked about with Orlando, it, it still doesn't address my concern. And I'm just going to have to give up. It's a snowbird. Because they're still going to say this is their main residence. They're still going to vote here. They're still going to have their bills here.
And I, I, I'll, I'll give you a little more with it because obviously it's intent, but then there's a factual basis that is left, it's going to be left for a legal challenge. And I understand your concerns and how that can be manifested heavily, um, on our hearts about our feelings. Um, that's, that's a legal challenge that I don't know that I want to invest our charter into delving into further.
And, and one thing I would offer, just remember, w- when we're talking about things that are going in the charter, we're talking about bare legal minimums to be allowed to run. If it, it is a perfectly reasonable position to hold to say, I'm going to vote against anybody who only lives here X months out of the year and they're a snowbird. It's a perfectly reasonable thing to put that on a mail piece and mail it out to everybody. So, I mean, it's, it's a perfectly legitimate political issue. I'd offer you on that point, I would imagine if someone were in that circumstance and, and an opponent were so inclined, that's precisely what they put on the mail piece.
And we have a very vocal, um, local demographic that I'm absolutely certain that, um, if someone appeared on a ballot, that you had an overreaching moment of they're a snowbird and we don't see them or they're not here, then that challenge is obviously open to any individual. then that challenge is obviously open to any individual that will want to carry that up.
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I, I just, I listened to everything that was presented and it has not changed my position. I'm in favor of keeping everything the way it is now.
Thank you so much. Andrea, any additional comment?
No, I agree. Let's keep it as it is.
Okay, then I think that's a resounding, we will move towards agenda item six, which is a discussion of chapters four through seven of the charter. And I'm going to allow our legal counsel to give us an overview of those chapters for discussion.
I'm sure, thank you very much. And, and if I'm go too fascinated this, please stop me. I'm just minding the clock as I've got to run out of here in a little bit. But you have on your agenda, taking a peek at articles four through seven. Article four is the legislative chapter and it deals with a number of matters relating to your governing body, the town commission. Section seven, or section 4.1 addresses commission meeting procedures, specifies twice, twice a month meetings, which I would suggest you is probably say the norm for municipalities, not just of, of Oakland size, but various sizes throughout the state. There are some that have just once per month, but it is within the authority of the commission to change it to be something other than twice a month if they were to so move. Have pretty standard provisions on being able to call meetings by the mayor or the call of three commission members, specifies here 24 hours notice or, or shorter time. One thing to keep in mind, whenever you see anything in a charter or ordinance relating to meetings, you have to evaluate that in the context of Florida sunshine law. There are a number of instances where it's perfectly reasonable to call a meeting on four hours notice. You have a hurricane bearing down on you and you've got to pass an emergency declaration so you get your FEMA reimbursement. It's not appropriate to call it on four hours notice if you're going to just try to fire up and rezone half the city or anything like that. So those are just, just because you see that you can call on 24 hours notice, doesn't mean that state law is going to say it's cool to have anything heard on 24 hours notice and so on, just a thing to keep in mind. A lot of this is, is relatively standard stock stuff you find in a municipal charter, just specifying that they out there on rules of procedure, keep minutes, which of course is required by the sunshine law in Florida law. Trying to integrate as well in what we had discussed previously in the memo, we provided you with some suggestions. I believe 4.1C had some language, we had some suggestions on. This, this provision has some interesting language where it calls out that if two of the, two members of the commission are unable to vote because of abstention, then it requires a unanimous vote. And in that instance, unanimous vote would be three members. It's effectively just. We found it strange that it was calling out abstention for a voting conflict effectively, but but not absence, because the effect, it actually leads to a slightly different effect. So you all know this is really in the weed stuff. But the default under Florida law, when you have anybody voting on anything, all right, is what we call simple majority. All right, and simple majority literally means you got five members, right? Two of them are absent, you have three there. Simple majority would be two, which means you could have a minority of the entire body making a decision for the entire body. That can be totally fine, all right? But what this provision seemed to be getting at is, hey, for any, you know, for any decisions, we want three members. That is a very typical provision you find in municipal charters. You have a five-person voting body. They say you need at least three affirmative votes. So that changes the default rule and makes it slightly more difficult here. If the council, or pardon me, if the committee were so inclined, we were recommending just standardizing that to say basically if they're unable to vote, basically for any reason, either they're not there or they have to abstain, then it requires that what we call an absolute majority, three. Not required by any means, it's just, we didn't see a rational reason why you would do the one and not the other. If the idea is you want to make sure at least three of the five are in favor of something, probably want to have that across the board. That was one thing we addressed there. Moving down to, to, oh, and actually got a couple of different pieces here, so I'll just ask very briefly, is there any comments or questions about 4.1?
So looking at the March 24 memorandum from your firm with regard to the recommended revisions to 4.1C, just for a point of clarification, you're removing the language that says required abstention pursuant to state law.
And adding due to absence or abstention.
Absence or abstention, not just abstention.
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
We, we didn't, we didn't, and there, there might be, but it just didn't jump out at us what the meaningful difference would be, whether or not they had a voting conflict or they stayed home that day. And it really just boils down to, if you only have three people in the room and you want to approve something, go and take all three. As opposed to taking two. Again, that's, that's not the default under Florida law, but it is a very common provision you find in municipal charters to say they want to maintain that minimum threshold. They want to make sure you have what's called an absolute majority. You have at least three in favor. Any other initial questions about 4.1?
I, I like the recommended change.
Moving on down to 4.2, didn't have anything in our memo concerning it, but this is relating to prohibition. So this is prohibitions on the town commission. First off, and a lot of this is different species of what we call in, in charter parlance, non-interference provisions. The first one is neither the commission or any of its members shall dictate the appointment or removal of any town employees. This of course integrates with the idea that town employees as a general matter are hired and fired by and were for the town manager. And it, it does provide the outlet, the commission may express its views and fully and freely discuss with the town manager, anything pertaining to the appointment or removal of such officers and employees. So they can discuss it with the town manager, but ultimately that power lies with the town manager. More broadly, getting down to the interference with administration provision. We have very standard exception to it here, except for the purpose of inquiries, investigations made in good faith and accordance with a resolution adopted by the commission. Commission and its individual members shall deal with town employees who are subject direction and supervision of the town manager solely through the town manager. And neither the commission nor its members shall give orders to any such employee, neither publicly or privately. And it goes on to express some intent concerning this. And a charter provision you typically see when you want to say you really mean it is right after that, any willful violation of the section by the mayor or commission member may be grounds for removal from all. So it's calling out that, you know, that matter in particular is one that could be, you know, of grave consequence. And I, I can just tell you, you, you find that provision a fair bit in municipal charters. It's, it's meant to be a an important marker for, for indicating the importance of the, of the manager, commission, form of government. Moving on, another prohibition, you're holding other office, no elected town official shall be appointed town, shall hold any appointed town officer or town employment while in office. Some places that's a very surprising sentence to even have to write. In other places, I can tell you, you would be shocked at how often the thought comes up. So it's a thing that comes up from time to time, but we have what is a typical standard provision in a lot of charters that no doing but. Any questions on any of those provisions? Moving on, 4.3 is very straightforward, it's just saying adopt ordinance, ordinances in the manner set forth in Florida statutes. That's primarily in section 166041 or statutes. Section 4.4, emergency ordinances. This just puts a little bit of meat on the bones. That same section of Florida statutes, 166041, does call out some matters relating to emergency ordinances. But what this effectively does is graft on, frankly, this is all very standard. You don't find this in every municipal charter, but it's in a lot of them. Where they address emergency ordinances at all, they will exclude certain types of of subject matters from being able to be the subject of emergency ordinances, levying taxes, for example, it's understandable. And then providing some form and procedure for it. I would suggest you the most, the most common, but interesting part of this is the, the provision here that says emergency ordinances are automatically repealed as of the 61st day following the effective date. That I have never seen a number other than that in my recollection in municipal charters. It's actually not in the state statute. There's, there's nothing in the state statute that says how long an emergency ordinance actually lasts, but uniformly it seems to be 60 days is, is where it goes.
I just want to go back to the removal of the language in the purportory paragraph of 4.4. It's a redundancy?
Oh yeah, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I got, right. Thank you so much. There, that was at the, where was that at? Was that at the, yeah, it was, that was at the, the very end of the very first paragraph there. Yet we've, we sat and read it like a million times. That was a copy and paste error. It, it's not saying it a second time is not saying anything legally interesting or different.
Understood that. I just wanted to make sure for the.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah.
Clarifying that that language has been stricken in the recommendations for revisions.
Yes, thank you.
And just want to bring it to the body of the chair members that they have no issue with that language being stricken.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let me move on back here. So that's emergency ordinances. 4.5, authentication, recording, disposition of ordinance, resolution and charter amendments. This, a lot of this stuff is going to get into frankly, kind of restating Florida law, which when it's, when it's accurate, it's perfectly fine. No reason to fool around with it. Basically just, or either Florida law or, you know, standard municipal practice, you've got authentication of, of ordinances, resolution by the mayor and the town clerk. On all of this, the requirement for the town clerk to maintain the books of ordinances and resolution and that they be made available for public inspection to the public. Really nothing remarkable in 4.5 I would offer to you, unless anyone has any questions. Similarly, with regard to section 4.6 and then 4.7, annual budget adoption in fiscal year. Both of these are a restatement of Florida law. Just, yes, ma'am.
So as it relates to the fiscal year, I do want you to provide a little commentary and analysis as it relates to, because we're going to get into elections in section five.
Yes.
And I want to make sure that there's a understanding of our fiscal year as it relates to the type of elections that we're choosing to participate in.
So.
How that can be impacted, along with the supervise of elections from a, you know, law standpoint and
Sure.
capacity of elections.
So from a fiscal, from a fiscal year standpoint, there is no choice for the, for the town. As opposed to like a corporation or private business, you can fool around with that a little bit. The state of Florida has made that decision for every municipality in the state, it starts October 1st. So you are on a uniform fiscal year budget cycle on that, starting October 1st. When it comes to elections, whether they're being held in March or they're being held in November and so on, just kind of got to plan around it. So it, it, when it, if, if, for example, there were a decision to move elections to November or what have you, you just plan around it a little bit in, in the budget. And to the extent that any expenditure gets broken up in the middle because it's, you know, September 30th, October 1st, that's just how the cookie crumbles because that's, that's how it, it works for stuff for all counties. All counties are also on an October 1st fiscal year. And they have to deal with primary elections in August and general elections in November every even numbered year. So that's just how the cookie crumbles on that.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification, obviously. We don't have a lot of the public present, but I just wanted a record.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a worthwhile, it's a worthwhile question because I've actually been asked a lot, can we change the fiscal year for some reason or another? And that's, that's one that. Moving on down to 4.8, very similarly, this is, this is effectively a restatement of, of the requirements of 166 and the 200s relating to municipal budgeting and 200.065. There, the legislature over the last many decades has very much locked down how taxation, millage and budget, adoption, amendment and so on, all works. So there's nothing particularly interesting added by section 4.8 with respect to that. This is just about amendments throughout the fiscal year.
Clark, will we acknowledge the physical presence of one of our committee members?
Thank you. Kurt Geis has now entered the room.
Moving, moving on down and, and we are going to have one piece in, in four that is interesting and not just a restatement of law, but I'm just kind of zipping through the other parts here. Section 4.9 and 4.10, these again are restatements of existing requirements in Florida law with regard to 4.9. This is just a restatement of the authority of any municipality in Florida to be able to assess taxes authorized by law and assessments and fees that are offered. Moving on to independent audit, every municipality in the state of Florida is required to have independent audit. The legislature has actually in recent years significantly legislated how the auditor is to be selected. For good reason in this instance, the requirements for setting up a committee that, that advises on selecting the auditor and so on. Then the auditor provides an audit report every year to the governing body as well as to the state of Florida. But nothing unique or interesting that I can recall is, is provided in 4.11. 4.11, borrowing and debt limitations is a little more interesting.
Slow down for a moment.
Yes, ma'am.
You did speak about section 4.9, leaving an assessment and an audit. Just for the record, I want to acknowledge that these are things that council is saying are in line with state law and no recommendations are being made for those sections.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
Moving down to 4.11, you do have a little interesting stuff going on in this one. So in the first subsection, A, borrowing. If this just specifies that the town commission is allowed to borrow money as municipalities do. The interesting piece I would offer to you is down in subsection B, debt limitations. Without elector approval, the aggregate amount of bonds or other evidences of indebtedness of the town shall not exceed 2% of the assessed valuation of the taxable property within the town as shown on the pertinent tax records at the time of the authorization. And it provides for certain things that are exceptions to this. Revenue bonds related to utility funds that can be supported by utility enterprise revenues or that are based on user fees established by the town commission and accepted at reasonable rates by the bonding companies. Quite frankly, one does encompass, and I, I'm not thinking contemplation of the particular debt structure, what we have in the town. I'll just share with you generally. These are in fact the most common types of borrowing that municipalities engage in. These are in fact, the most common types of borrowing that municipalities engage in called revenue bonds for water and wastewater. That's where you pledge the revenues of the uh, of the water and wastewater system to the repayment of the bonds. Or when you have some sort of bond, that is where you pledge user fees that are to be charged for a particular for monies that have been gotten, say for the improvement to some facility or what. Um, there are other exemptions uh, here for uh, certain short term notes that are for uh, that mature before the next fiscal year. Then it expressly uh, exempts out a particularly uh, a particular piece of existing debt related to the charter school. Uh, then it exempts out emergency appropriations um, that were discussed above. If you went through the emergency appropriation process. So I, I guess what I would offer to you is uh, unique is not every municipality has in its charter a um, a debt limitation. In fact, it's, it's kind of an interesting distinction. Uh, debt limitations and, and things like it. Uh, the courts in Florida, Forest Room Court and others come down to an interesting thing. They have found it is illegal and unconstitutional for counties to do that to themselves. But it's okay for municipalities to do that to themselves. And quite frankly, courts have offered no great reason, explanation why, other than that's what they think is cool. Uh, in any event, it is uh, permissible for a municipal charter to have debt limitations in it. Oakland has one in.
So I think I would inquire as to subsection four eleven B three, when it talks, it speaks to existing debt approved by a prior ordinance. Obviously that ordinance was prior to the commencement of this charter review. And would that encompass any debt that has been incurred up to the initiation of that ordinance?
Great question. So yeah, no, I think that exception there is just directed to exempting out saying that debt that was approved by that ordinance twenty thirteen oh seven is not counted toward that, towards that two percent. Any other debt that's not exempted by one of these other things would count towards that two percent. And just to, to jump to potential next question, I have no idea where we are with respect to, you know, exempt versus non exempt debt and, and how far along we are uh, to it. That might be a, a question that's uh, discussed. I will um, just share with you that uh, there are some other provisions uh, down, uh, further down in the section here. One is for refinancing uh, from savings. This is a provision you find and actually let me back up and, and tell you this. So we have a uh, requirement prohibition. Two sides of the same coin in the Florida constitution that whenever a, any government pledges its full faith and credit. All right. So it's the pledges, the taxing power of that government is really what it's getting at uh, to the repayment of debt. Then, and that, that debt is going to be in existence for a period of longer than technically in the constitution says two years, but it's otherwise implemented as within a single budget year. Um, if you're going to be pledging the full faith and credit of that government, um, then it had, that debt has to be approved by voter referendum. All right. But remember I mentioned the most common debt you see a municipality take on is what's called revenue debt, revenue notes. If pledging the uh, revenues from the water and wastewater system, not pledging taxing authority. When you actually read those, those bond resolutions, it goes into exquisite details saying, you know, they can't uh, you know, you're uh, they can't use the taxing power to pay this or that or whatever, and, and all sorts of things like this. So similarly, we have very similar uh, things that apply to that requirement for, for full faith and credit debt. Put into this provision here for this, any debt that would exceed that two percent debt limitation. Got to have a referendum and if you had the opportunity to refinance for savings, you don't have to have a reference. The idea is if you already have existing debt, you get to refinance it down to less interest rate. Not going to put it to the voters to ask, hey, can we pay less money? It, it's built in that you're allowed to do that. Um, so you have these additional provisions here saying that it's put to uh, referendum if you're going to exceed that two percent debt limitation. So that is uh, in that, in that whole section there. The unique part is that two percent debt limitation with uh, some of those uh, exemptions.
So while I understand your explanation for four eleven um, B three. And I don't offer a revision to that statement, but I may offer a check and balance by the town manager that we're within that two percent capacity for that item.
We are, and if you guys want to discuss this one further, we can bring the finance director in at future meeting to talk through this and maybe the commission salary portions that have really to do with the budget.
Yeah, I'd like to request that if we can, if we may. And then um, eh, one thing I find interesting, just kind of reading through, everything's been at relatively high levels. That was the guidance we got at the beginning, right? Keep this not very specific, keep it high level, allow for interpretation. Then we get to this section, which is like excruciatingly detailed. Um, I'm just wondering it, i- if we, we are revisiting it, right? And, and there was a lot of recommendations about language cleanup. What might this section look like if it was cleaned up?
It's a great question. Um, a- as I mentioned, um, this is a unique provision in that you do not have um, in, in every, every municipality in the state of Florida is allowed to incur debt. Not every municipal, not every municipal charter says you're allowed to incur debt. Why? Because we talked about municipal home rule powers act. They're allowed that, they have that authority. When it comes to this specific thing here, I'm speculating because I don't know the history of this particular provision here. This looks like a very particular uh, matter where they said we don't want the debt to grow beyond some certain threshold. And we'll, we'll agree to carve out certain types of things that we don't think are bad debt, if you will, versus, you know, good debt versus bad debt or have you. Um, but I think this actually fleshes it out pretty well. When you're going to be putting in a provision like that, because again, while there is a lot, while there are a lot of words here. I think uh, uh, as I mentioned, the things about requiring voter uh, approval for it and then refinancing for savings. While they put down all those words, those are very stock and standard things you do for, for other pledge of full faith and credit type things. So that is um, that's helpful in this singular instance here. I guess what I'm saying is if, if there were not a debt limitation in the charter, then this whole thing would come out and all the rest of it would be complete surplusage. You did have a debt uh, limit in the charter. It doesn't hurt to have this level of detail to give a little bit of clarity as to how all that's going to work. So I, I, I would suggest to you the primary question, if there were a question to, to look at would be um, you know, there's a two percent debt limit, subject to certain exceptions. Is there any uh, interest or reason to make any changes? There is absolutely no requirement of that.
And I think for me, I, I don't necessarily question the history of that revision and why it's placed there. I just want to be able to check and balance to make sure that, you know, from a financing budget standpoint, we've maintained that in the ten years since the last review, not exceeded. Or, you know, understanding the exceptions that have occurred during that timeframe so that we're planning in a capacity moving forward or that specific nature in, in why it's there. Yeah.
Madam Chair, I agree. I, thank you for clarifying that. I'm not looking for the, the whole history. But if there's something that we're going to mess up by changing it, then we should probably know that.
Right. And, and I can tell you, we have not exceeded it. Um, at least in the six years I've been here. Um, however, like I said, I think it would be good to have the finance director in here to tell you her perception. What does that look like, you know, on a repayment level and, and what can the town actually afford? So, you know, that might have been some of the previous discussion. Um, we might want to have some of those guardrails in there, but let's have a more thorough discussion on that.
Very good. And Chair, if it's all right with you, I'll just uh, move on to article five. Then uh, article five is on elections. Um, as you'll recall, uh, in our memo that we provided with uh, some recommendations to consider, the primary comment our, our office had was uh, to consider uh, whether runoff elections were, were something you wanted to maintain in the uh, in the charter. It, it does specify your non person elections, which is the
However.
Uniform case.
I will preface you um, counsel that while the recommendations were made in the March twenty fourth um, memorandum from your office, we've not fully vetted or considered them.
Of course. Oh, yeah.
And so I would like to go through them individually because there are some proposed revisions to different subsections before we get to the runoff section. So specifically five point one C and D. You offered recommendations and I just want to make sure that while you're present with us, we're able to review those in completeness.
And my, my rec, my recollection, I'm just taking a look uh, back at the memo here, I think all of the, the uh, language changes you find in that memo related to section five point one all have to do with runoff elections because runoff elections are, the references are pervasive throughout that, that section there. So in uh, subsection D and, or C and D, um, the, the only things changed are um, removing references to the runoff elections and then to the extent that removing the sentence that references the runoff elections leaves anything hanging because the sentence also reference, you know, then the person will be elected. It adds a sentence that just says the person getting the most votes will be duly elected mayor or um, uh, or elected to that seat and what have.
Understandably so. I just want to make sure that we're going through in a chronological capacity um, to preserve the record. Um, as it relates to election dates, I know that we're removing the twenty eight days for the runoff and we get to the next section. But while we have you here, I would like a more invasive um, explanation to the memorandum for the record.
Sure. So with regard to runoff elections, generally what you, what you find in the memo, what you see implemented and all the changes that are provided here. Basically moving from uh, from a runoff model where uh, if no one gets a majority of the votes cast in the given election, uh, under the runoff model, if nobody gets uh, fifty percent plus one. Then the top two vote getters would then have another election held, I think under the current language, uh, twenty eight days later. Um, and then whoever gets the most votes out of those two would be the winner. What is suggested as a, as a way to move away from the uh, runoff model, particularly again in line of the recent history of things not going to runoffs in any event, but that complication sitting out there um, is simply moving to uh, what we call just traditional first past the post uh, elections or whoever gets the most votes wins. Uh, so um, and there, you find that most clearly stated in subsection D there. Uh, candidate for mayor receiving the most votes shall be duly elected mayor. So in, in those instances uh, where uh, you might have three people running, it is of those three, whoever gets the most votes uh, gets it in that instance. That would be the effect uh, of that. And again, um, keep in mind, any, any of the recommendations from our office are, are not saying on this one in particular, not saying to you, this is illegal or anything like this. Just uh, something for the, the CRC to consider. If the CRC uh, did want to go in the direction of maintaining having runoff elections, it would be our recommendation to at bare minimum uh, have those elections held probably sixty days out. Is that? Yeah, at least sixty days out now in order to comply with the federal help America vote act. So there, there would be a recommended change either way, whether it be eliminate uh, runoff elections or move that to be sixty days out. Mika, I've got a comment.
Thank you for your presence.
I think there was a comment made about the simple majority last time in, in the highly improbable or unlikely event of a tie.
Ah, that's an easy one. Uh, under Florida law, you draw lots. And uh, that's usually left to the supervisor elections or at least we try to push it to supervisor elections office. So it's nobody else's responsibility. I've seen it implemented a lot of ways. You flip a coin, you literally draw straws, uh, all sorts of different ways. Uh, there's actually litigation about it up in Lake County recently. Yeah. Uh, as to what that means, and I think the judge thought is a little silly because what's the difference between flipping a coin and doing some other thing where it's a fifty fifty chance, but it's, you draw lots. That's what, that's what the Florida election code says. So.
Um, and since I have a representative from the supervisor of elections, um, are you aware of any like extreme circumstances where that's occurred on multiple occasions?
Hoping that it'll happen. We, we, it came close uh, about ten years ago that it was close, but uh, statistical ties very rare given particularly with recount um, procedures uh, when those are implemented. Uh, but yeah, I, we don't have any um, guidance. We, we're ready though and prepared to draw lots uh, as necessary.
But is it your experience that maybe that's not occurred because of the mechanism of runoff chosen by a particular municipality? Or just it hasn't occurred?
Just it hasn't occurred, I think, because of the rarity of an actual statistical tie given amount of votes that typically.
Thank you.
Oakland's pretty special, so.
Good. I'm, I'm, I'm there with you to draw lots when it happens.
I remember many years ago, uh, Bill Cowles first told me about the uh, supervisor elections prayer. I don't care who wins, just make it not close. But um, so yet the um, a- and by the way, I'm not suggesting you need to have the, the uh, your full discussion right now uh, concerning the question of, of March elections versus say November elections. I would suggest to you that from your prior discussions, that's probably the other piece of discussion that you would pull out of article is, is the matter of you want to stick with March elections. Do you want to, you know, move it to coincide with some other cyclical?
So at least as a matter of future um, revisiting, I do want to make sure that we put this on a future agenda to have an opportunity to vet and have a more eloquent discussion about um, our thoughts with a full body present.
We can do that.
Madam Chair, in, in light of the time, because I'm going to have to run shortly as well. I'll, I'll keep trucking very quickly here. Uh, section uh, five point two uh, recall initiatives and referendum. This is uh, just uh, another one saying uh, do it the way the Florida statutes say. Which perfectly innocuous and uh, stand as it is. Moving on to article six, uh, charter amendments, again, uh, subsection A, same thing, charter amendment uh, maybe or charter may be amended in accordance with the provisions of Florida statutes. Um, B is interesting. Uh, if conflicting amendments are adopted at the same election, the one receiving the greatest number of affirmative votes shall prevail to the extent of such conflict. Interestingly, that is a wildly uncommon provision. Um, I can tell you from a, an incredibly ridiculous amount of research on a, on that question, on a similar thing. Um, in a different jurisdiction, that is actually the conclusion one Supreme Court of a different state came to. There is no law in Florida on that exact question or permit. There is no case directly on point. Um, I will share with you. I'm of two minds as to whether or not that provision is um, perfectly consistent with uh, with chapter one, sixty six and other parts of Florida law. I will tell you the proper and right thing to do in, in just about every circumstance is to ensure that in a given election, you don't have conflicting amendments on the ballot. You understand what I'm saying? That, that, that's just a problem that shouldn't get within seven steps in any event. Um, moving on down to article seven, general provisions. A lot of this is uh, very standard here. I'll point out anything that is not. Section seven point one is just for the lawyers. Uh, that is our severability clause. That's just kind of a marker to any. Section 7.1 is just for the lawyers. That is our severability clause. That's just kind of a marker to any judges. Who'd ever be reviewing either this charter or any amendments. If you got a problem with one piece of it, don't throw the baby out with the bath is really what that boils down. Moving down to 7.2 Conflicts of Interest Ethical Standards, first paragraph is. First paragraph is kind of standard. In that it just specifies that it's that the officials, employees and appointees of the town are subject to the. Standards of contract, public officers, employees set by law. That's primarily in Chapter 112 of the Florida statutes. In addition, though, Section 7.2 does set up an additional ethical standard. And it would be difficult for me to get into the weeds of it all here, but it's effectively getting at some of the. Subject matters you see that are prohibited in certain parts of Chapter 112. Relating to doing business with one's own agency and and things like this. And this is very similar to. Couldn't tell you that it's analytically exactly the same as some of the very detailed ordinances. This is actually a fair example of of where you try to put together something in the sentence or two. In Chapter 112, they go on for about a page and a half because it can get very complicated. But you do have a general prohibition here against. Commission members having financial interests. In contracts or sales to the town or contractors supplying the town. Without full disclosure and it being authorized by the commission before the event. Keep in mind that while there is a prohibition going on in here and the primary thing you're doing here is curing it by. Making it, you know, making it out in the open and it being authorized. The fact that that this is in here does not would not get those commissioners out of the requirements of state law. So in evaluating a a voting conflict, or even if they recuse themselves, any other sort of conflict. You'd look not just at this, but also to Chapter 112. It's kind of a high level overview of it. Any questions on on that? Moving on down, Section 7.3 is actually a fairly standard provision. All appointments and promotions of town officers and employees should be made solely on the basis of merit and abilities demonstrated by a valid and reliable examination or other evidence of competence. Again, pre-standard provision you you see in in a charter. How that's implemented from place to place is. It's implemented differently from place to place. I'll just hear. Moving on further down, Section 7.4 Charter Revisions. This is the provision that gave rise to your Charter Review Committee. As you know. Every 10 years, we have the Appointment of a Charter Revision Committee. Gives you a timeline for your work to be done and then you proceed forward.
And you're.
Answer any questions?
Question on the Charter Review, is is it allowable for that language to be changed in such a way that it says that instead of they shall appoint. That they shall review whether an appointment is necessary?
Absolutely.
So that we could go back to the commission to say, okay, we our charter is in good shape right now. We don't need to spend the money on. This evolution just because it's in the charter.
You could you could.
If it is, then they could always say by majority vote of the of the commission.
You that that could absolutely be a charter amendment to amend this provision. And so if I'm hearing correctly, it effectively would be changing the requirement of this provision to say. Every 10 years, the Town Commission shall engage in and do an evaluation. And then make an affirmative determination, one way or the other, whether a a Charter Revision Committee should be.
Correct. And then if they decide it is, then we can have the rest of the language in there as to what the committee's responsibilities would be.
My next question would be, in your experience, what is the. Minimum threshold or timeframe for a Charter Review Commission?
All over the place. I I told you that. Told you I I helped a little town through their first revision of their charter since the 1920s. That's too long. 10 years, I would I would say is probably the most typical for municipalities. Some places, Orange County famously for county charter, does it every four years, whether that's a good or bad thing. A lot of people did will debate, but I would say 10 is is very common in municipalities.
Well, and based on the history, it was clearly needed. There's the work that the two prior to us did and then what we're doing here, I think has been tremendous, but. We are really kind of starting to fine tune this thing to the point where the little things are not mattering as much anymore and the grammatical there is being fixed. And and again, I'm always the one that wants to save the taxpayer money. So if we don't have to do this. Then let's not. But if it's needed, then that's what we vote on these individuals to determine for us.
And I think just as a personal commentary. I think a 10-year review is necessary and it is necessary to involve the electors of the community to commence a board. And they could have one meeting and say, we looked at all the articles and we see no revisions. But that's just that check and balance that the commission does not have the entire control over. You know, potential revisions or things that anxious. So I think that it would be prudent to allow that. Article 7.4 to remain. To allow that second voice that the the perception of the community is not that the commission has that absolute control.
I'm so very sorry. So very sorry.
Just one quick procedural question. If if we decided to recommend to push our elections to the November presidential and governor elections. That gets voted on in March of 26. Would that take place in November of 26, our first election, or would it pushed November 28?
The typical, the typical thing you do when you change elections. Is you. The terms of the sitting commissioners, all right, who will be up for that election will be extended. It's it's uniformly the case that that they extend the term to that to that new election as opposed to cutting that term short. Okay, so you'd extend the term to when the election would be and then. That's when that's how we would implement. So sometimes it takes a little time to implement, you know, when when new election.
So so if we have three seats up in March 2026, right, they'd still be up. But then what you're saying is that the new people. Would go from March to November, basically, right?
What it would be is for your terms, right?
Yes.
It would it would be, let's say they're up in 20, March of 26.
Yes.
Right? So they would be naturally be to March of 30.
Right.
What I'd tell you is those people, their.
November.
Probably that Charter Amendment would say, if it was approved, their their terms would be extended to November of 30. Okay. And similarly, for the people whose elections would be up in March of 28. Their terms would be extended to November of 28. And then they and then they the elections would be in November of that. So moving on just to hit these last little bits here very quickly, Section 7.5 Variations in Pronouns. It's just states the obvious. It's not intended to says he or she or whatever. There's a stray one in there. It's not meant to say. Section 7.6 Very Standard Nondiscrimination Clause. The town shall not adopt any ordinance, policy or practice discriminates against any person due to race, national origin, religion, gender, age or disability. These, of course, are required by state and federal law. And finally, 7.7 This section addresses precedents over related laws. This section, I don't have any recommendations for changing it because it's it's not strictly necessary. It's not strictly true. What I mean by that is most of it's true, except it it says at the very end that. If there's any part of the charter or your code of ordinances that conflicts with state law, then the charter or code of ordinances prevails. Not how it works. Except if you have a charter provision that actually dates from a special act. Passed by the legislature, it could. So it gets it gets really nuanced. There is some cleanup to be done in there. If there is any interest, I, you know, I could noodle on a little bit more, how to. Clean that up a little bit more. It doesn't, regardless of what it says in that provision, does not change how a judge would apply any of it. They'd look at that and say, that's very nice and interesting, but we got to apply state law.
In my perception, I I'm hearing you and I'm thinking that maybe that's. A article and provision that we address after. We have completely reviewed the charter and made recommendations and then council can allow us to know. Whether there are any whether there are any conflicts of law and the proposed changes that we're making to our charter that could potentially be impacted.
Sure. And we'll. We would tell you at the outset, if there's any proposed charter amendment that would not comply with state law. If if you don't mind, I I am going to noodle a little bit more to see if there's any language tweaks to that. I could squeeze into a cleanup amendment. And let you know, just for the purposes of clarity.
So the only thing I would wonder about that is, as the voter is reading this, the more we present to them, the more they're going to go, what is this about? And if it's strictly because there's some potential conflict that. It when I hear you got a noodle to figure something out, how to say it better. It sounds like it says it good enough because the law is going to prevail anyways. So the less we can overburden our voters with of what are we doing here? I think, you know, if it's a change, it's recommended by this, they need to know what it is and and we can explain it, but if it gets into something nuanced like that, just be careful about.
Madam Chair, I I do have to head out, but thank you all very much for your time today.
Well, Wade, we definitely want to thank you for all the time that you've provided us and the clarification and explanations given to the agenda today. And I think you got a good second over here that can navigate us through the rest. If there is no further discussion with regard to Chapters 7. Four through seven, I do want to. Ask each committee member present of any additional. Commentary, inquiries or discrepancies that they'd like to have heard before we move to public comment.
None here?
I have none.
No public comments. Elise, is there anyone other than the other members of the committee on the? View?
No, there's only Andrea.
Okay.
And she had no comment.
Okay. So as it relates to Agenda Item Eight, Discussion Items for the Next Meeting. I think that now that we've had an overview of each article of the charter provided to us by council. That we could some type of way recapulate the recommended revisions. To have discussion, second discussion on those proposed revisions. However, I do think that it would be very necessary for us to have a deep dive into Article. Five, which relates to elections. I know we've given a cursory view and we've gotten some explanation, but it seems that that may be an article that would require a deeper dive of. Discussion from the committee. So my recommendation for. Items for the next meeting would be to recapture. The articles that have been reviewed. The proposed revisions so that we may review them once again. Have committee discussion and come to some type of resolution as it relates to what direction we may want to go. Or any additional information we may need to make a decision on those issues.
Just to clarify, I will bring a memo to the next meeting and and that memo will go over. Sort of the changes that I understand based on the discussions that we've had at this meeting in the past few that you all are in favor of. And the items that, you know, if I'm not sure which direction you all want to go, then I will I will leave that off the memo because those are still being discussed. Is that is that what you all are looking for?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I think the other thing that we would need from Elise would be as it related to. The 4.11 B3, just, you know, having the Finance Director of the town to come and talk to about, talk to us about. You know, our debt and where we are with that, just to have a basis for understanding. The current and what may be projected so that we're making sure that that very strict percentage can be adhered to and accommodated in the 10 years. 10 years moving forward.
Yes, we can do that at the next meeting.
So we may want to, I don't want to prolong our meeting process, but. Actually, the next meeting with the recap and that Finance Director could be sufficient. And maybe address the elections at a subsequent meeting because it seems to be a larger. Item or discussion and hopefully we'd have an in-person quorum for that item.
We don't have them yet.
I was going to propose, since Wade has already had to leave us, but I would. Prefer to try and set those meetings at a time when he could be here. Maybe Elise could could send out some sort of communication that we all privately respond to with our availability and set a meeting moving forward. Would that work for everyone?
It will. I just want to let everybody know I'm leaving the country on the 27th of May through the 19th of June, so I will not be able to even zoom in. If we wanted to do two in May to get it over with, I could do this.
And we will await further communications from Elise with regard to availability for the next two meetings. And. Without further discussion, does anyone have any additional comments, discussions or inquiries for this meeting? Hearing none, I would move for adjournment of the meeting at. 5:11 PM.
Thank you all, and thank you, Dan.